Hey, ready?
Hey, hey!
Hey, hey!
Ho, ho!
Ho, ho!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
Hey, hey!
Hey, hey!
Ho, ho!
Ho, ho!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
Hey, hey!
Hey, hey!
Ho, ho!
Ho, ho!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
Bill and Lisa's gotta go!
We're not gonna take it.
No, we're not gonna take it.
We're not gonna take it anymore.
Same?
Same, versus there.
This is Ryan O'Telham Hall. This is your day, so you guys can stand up and be counted and have your say. Nothing more than that. We've got some good speakers, we've got some good videos to show you. And I think it's important that the rest of the Maersk River see us, and the rest of New Brunswick sees us. That we're not gonna go quietly in the night. We're gonna stand up and be counted. And unfortunately... The only problem that we do have here today is that unfortunately, we got two empty seats.
A car!
A car!
You know, like, there are elected representatives. And yes, we did invite them, I invited Bill myself. And Bill said to me, "I have nothing to say to you." And I says, "Bill, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a voter. And you will answer to me. But not on that, you're gonna answer to the people of Maersk River." I agree with that. You know, I have a group on Facebook called New Brunswick Political Questions and Polls. And I like to take the words of Jake King. Because I have great people on there, really knowledgeable people, and most people in political party, right? And yet, poor Jake here, I bash him a lot. So, don't think it's just a liberal thing. I bash him too. But what we're trying to come up with in my group is to inform people, to show them that there is a better way. That we need laws that protect the people of New Brunswick and of the Maersk River. You know? The Fraser Institute, back in 2012, did a study. And New Brunswick had one of the most corrupt governments in Canada. They compared us to Third World countries. This is New Brunswick, this is God's country! You know, one of the big things that we're missing here in New Brunswick are laws that protect the average person. We need transparency laws. We need accountability laws. We need ethic laws. We need MLA recall. If we had MLA recall right now, would Bill and Lisa still be here? Today's your day, and this is about jobs. I've had lots of calls. And Jerry, Jerry asked me a question the other day when he called me at home. And I said, "Jerry, yes, we have to come up with some solutions." So I went to my president in New Brunswick Political Questions and Polls, and I said, "Help me." And they did. It's just like this town hall. They all came together, and they helped me. So, what we come up with was a solution to try to fix the current situation in the Maersk River right now. And the only solution we can come up with is Bill and Lisa have to go. The Liberals have a two-seat slim majority, okay? This is the powder keg in New Brunswick. The Maersk River's the powder keg. You know, P3s, we don't have P3s? Okay. We'll get rid of P3s. The old elected government in here, they gotta do something. The Mayor shouldn't have to be playing for their jobs either. You know, it's simple. We need a government to stand up and protect us. And I was also doing some checking, and Encore, there's no reason for them to exist in New Brunswick. No other province has anything like it. But what you're seeing, what is being done to Maersk River, now I have a problem with that. Okay? Yes, there's a lawsuit going on, but who really cares? I don't care about the lawsuit. What I do care about is the fact that they're gonna take their check, and they can put 160 people to work. They can kick them out of the woods. No government in New Brunswick owns the woods. The people of New Brunswick own the woods. You know, you see the big sign here, when Elwood was in power, he talked about wood over Maersk should be cut in Maersk Mills. That's true, but it's not being done. When you got Irving cutting it here, and they're cutting, that's wrong. If Tony and the Maersk can't cut wood, then nobody should be cutting wood. You got Portobello and Uomo. They're the same company. Uomo and Portobello. They cost taxpayers 11 million bucks. You know? They're going after Maersk River for nothing, but they owe 11 million bucks. Where's the money? Why are you putting them out of business? You know? This is our future, we need to stand up for it. Our kids, our grandchildren, have a right to live on the Maersk River. You know, it's sad, because you got License 3 and 4 here in the Maersk, and that was going. And it's going to the past, it's going to the port of Bellevue. How come Portobello can take our wood and take it to the port of Bellevue? Okay? Why isn't there an investigation? If I heard, I said that we need the Auditor General to conduct an investigation, a forensic investigation into what's taking place in this. Our wood's disappearing. They don't have a wood lottery now, Maersk River. Who's taking the wood? They give it away, who's getting it? There you go. We need to stand up and be counted as one. It doesn't matter if you're Conservative, PC, whatever. We have to unite as one, and say, "Listen, we want laws that'll protect us." Bill and Lisa, for example. The Taxpayer Protection Act. That's a law to protect taxpayers, brought in by the board of governors, if I'm not mistaken. They cannot raise taxes unless they hold a referendum. And the people of New Brunswick have a right to cast their vote, whether the taxes are raised or not. They also held all political parties accountable for all their big promises during the election. We know about that stuff, don't we? Oh yeah! Yeah, well, they got rid of that, too. Since this government's come in, it's caused nothing but chaos. It's started New Brunswick against New Brunswick. People wanna put food on the table. And like I said, today, Bill and Lisa aren't here, but we can fix this problem right now. Bill and Lisa, pick up the phone, call your boss, I mean, go ahead and hurt it, and we'll get some wood here. And these people can go back to work. The P3s, even the Ontario government now says the P3s are wrong. Okay? The Mayor should be staying here as well. And just so you know, there is, well, true. Back on July 22nd, 2013, Bill Fraser, and I quote, "We have 110 people going home, not knowing where their next paycheck is going to come from." Fraser said, "We need to find a solution now, we can't afford to wait."
Vote for Jake!
Deputy Mayor Lisa Harris, when she was Deputy Mayor of the Maersk River, she was in full support of Maersk River.
Was that the best?
Yeah. She'll leave, I don't know where she is. I sent Doug to send out the letters to them so they could come to this. She wasn't at her office, her office was never open. I'm telling you, it's just bad, but they supported Maersk River. They went to you, people said, "We support you. Give us a vote, we support you, we'll back you." Guess not. Bill Fraser wrote a letter to Elwood, supporting Maersk River. Here it is. Guess it's not worth the paper and print money. So, like I said, we have very serious issues in here. The only way to fix this, and the only solution right now, to save our jobs, so our families go, they gotta go. There's no question. We are not being represented by these people. When they took the Ode to the Office, I don't see anywhere where it says, "Well, we're just gonna kiss a little ass, and we're gonna vote their way." That's what they're doing. Everything they've done, our seniors, our children, now the children, now they gotta raise a nickel for milk for the children. You know what? We may be a poor province, but I think we could use some taxpayer's money and pay for the milk for our children. I don't, how many of yous are tired of having to go to the airport, take a flood on them, because they got no way of working? Our grandchildren are going up there. Our children. It's just wrong. It's just wrong. But this started 20 years ago. 20 years ago this year. Old Pranky, he came in here and forced the milk mixing up the Maersk River. Did it work? No. We had excellent unemployment. It's a 20-year cycle. Every time we get a Liberal Premier that's a lawyer, the Maersk River gets screwed. Honest to God. And then, I met a couple here, and we did a video on them. And he gave me a document, that he had sent a letter to Bill Fraser, wanting support for Maersk River. And Bill Fraser said, "Bring me your resume, I'll help you get a job." Or picture his appointments. But, the funny thing is, is that Whiteman, our MLA, says, "No, I'm standing behind you, we're gonna fight for your jobs." But instead, he's saying, "Wait a second, give us some resumes." So, the Liberals already had an idea of what's taking place with that milk. They don't want an upper rung. You know, they don't want an upper rung. They don't want you guys to keep your job and keep it in the spirit. They want us to sit and take the scraps off their table. Be a lot of scraps on Bill's table. The goal here is, is that we have to stay united. It shouldn't be above political parties, it should be above what's in the best interest of the people. And this is your day. People, people told me everything under the sun about this. But, it's still your day, and you have a right to it. And I want you to be proud, because you're not standing alone anymore. There's people from all over New Brunswick that have come here, I've asked them to come here, to help us fight. I would ask Jerry Pruney, the Mayor, to come up and give us a hope, good talking.
Thank you very much, Erin. I just was here, and for some reason, I was singing to Donald Trump when Erin was up here. Erin did a good job. Thank you, Erin, and thank you for inviting me. I guess a lot of you just know me as a mayor, but I want you to get to know me a little better with this little speech of, what, 25 pages you said, or something? I don't know. No, it's gonna be short, sweet, but to the point. My main reason for being here today, and the councillors here today, is our concern about the job losses in the city of Maersk River. I guess you're like me, it's a beautiful day, we'd soon be home, right? But we're not, because we're concerned, and we have something to say. And we're gonna say it today. I want you to know that, first of all, that all these files, and I think Erin said it, are provincial files. They're not city or federal, they're provincial. I see a lot of people here today from Maersk River, and I seen Danny and Hal here too. I'm gonna start with them. Some of you wondered, "What did we do? What did the city do over the years? You did nothing, or what?" I'm just gonna give you a little idea of what we did, we're working with Maersk River. I want you to know that Kenzel and I have worked very hard on this file over the years, in an attempt to stop the job losses at Maersk River. I personally met with the Minister of Economic Development on different occasions. The Deputy Minister. We wrote letters, we had phone calls to government, and we did this quite a bit over the years. I attended one of the meetings with the Deputy Minister, with, I think it was Hal and Danny. Yep, they'll talk about it, I'm sure, after. But I want you to know that we never stopped. But we can't come up and tell you that, because, first of all, those are private business. And I gotta be careful what I say, and who I say it to. But I want you to know that we've been working on their behalf. What continues now, Hal's gonna speak in a few minutes, and he can tell you where they're at now. I don't wanna go into that, he can tell you, because he's with the company. So I want you to know, this is what we've been doing for Maersk River over the years. We're all so concerned about the job losses at Hiber's Recycling. The city met with government officials on this issue. I spoke to Minister Fraser, and councillors did too. They addressed with different ministers and that over the time with the Hiber Recycling. Then, Hiber's came to council, and they requested a letter of support, so that we can send to the Minister and support Hiber's recycling. Now, a few weeks ago, I wrote the letter, supporting the efforts of Hiber's Recycling. I spoke to Mr. Surgeon before the meeting here, and Fred, and they were happy with the letter, that the city is showing support. And the letter was written to the minister responsible, who was Brian Tenny, just so you know. Finally, I see a lot of people here from the nursing home, right here in front of me, who are very upset, and do not know what's gonna happen to them after the building, the nursing home is completed. There's not a mayor or a councillor in this country that would want to see 300 employees and their families being laid off. I know you're hurting. But I truly, truly believe that we also have to unite, and meet with government, whether you like it or not, to try to come up with some solution to your important concerns. I understand that you will be meeting with council, mayor and council, very soon, and I look forward to seeing you and to continuing this dialogue. I look around the room, and I see people who want to work, and who wanna stay in our area, and who are hurting. It bothers me, it hurts me. I didn't know until so far, but I'll tell you what you did. Myself and Kenzel will support you, and make sure that you are treated with respect and dignity. Thank you. I'd also like people to know that we have our guarantee here, Julie Gordon, and the life changer, the governor. And Jake, for all the hard work for the job that you brought here, I wish you could bring some work, this other government ain't doing too good.
Not to say much. Thank you, Erin, for putting this together, and for inviting me here today. I'm here today because I wanna help, there's no other reason to be here. You know, there's no reason to say no. I remember being in government, and one night we got spit on. We were not very popular. You know, you have to show up. You have to show up, no matter how bad people think you are. Politics is a no easy job. I had a background in things like music, drama, history, softball. I'm the most unlikely person you'd ever find as an MLA. There's no question, ask people with black hair, they would agree, no question about it. But you know, in my five years as anMLA, four of those as a backbencher in quite a large majority of government, that was unpopular, defeated, and the last better part of the year as an opposition critic for energy and mines and for Aboriginal affairs as well. It's been, it's been a good experience, but I've noticed something. Before I get into some detail, I need to let you know that my father-in-law, Sonny Matheson, who had quadruple bypass about three weeks ago, collapsed and hit his head about an hour ago. So I need to go pick up my boys and get them home, and I don't know how he's doing, so I can't stay long. I will apologize for it, there's nothing left to do, but I had to cancel the rest of the day's events too, so. So, I just, in my office, I represent from McGivney to Escumina. It's a huge writing, I believe it's the biggest. It has English, it has French, it has forests, and trees, and salmon, and lobster too, and beef moss, and a lot of other things going on, it's very diverse, very large, it's completely rural. The biggest complaint I hear as anMLA for five years running, both as a government member and as a politician member, is the people's displeasure with the Prime Lands and Forest Act and the Forest Department, about my own success. I'm not sure if you ever heard what I'm about to tell you before, but I'm telling you with an honest heart, and even sometime after today, I want you to consider what I said about this. I've seen a lot of protests. The summer of the first election was over Andy Power. There were 10,000 people in the courtyard in Queen Street protesting against the Graham administration at the time. Later, when I was in government, there were kudos to the unions, they fight for what they want, you do, I'll give you credit for that. You know, and I think that's admirable. There were a healthy amount of union protests over the five years, over various different issues. There were protests for and against abortion, there were protests for and against shale gas. I could go on, there were a number of them. But I can tell you something, the Andy Power protest was 10,000 people. Shale gas, although they would promote it as 500, was often less. And the union protests were as big as the shale gas protests are bigger, and sometimes the abortion protests were even bigger than those. So I'm gonna tell you something, and I need you to hear it, and I want you to think about it later on. Politicians, you know it, they look at numbers, they look at statistics, they count heads, who's angry at me? Oh my God, there's 400 people over here, 800 over here. It's the nature of the job. And when you protest forestry, and there's 200,000 people in New Brunswick that hate the practices, and you put 45 people in the courtyard, you're not making a difference. I can go on Facebook tomorrow and criticize everything since 1982. I can run through Budford, and Frank McKenna, and everyone right up to David Alford and Brian Mann, it doesn't matter. If you wanna make a difference, fill the courtyard. That's how the province... That's how the province feels. That's how it's going. I know that the unions understand that, there's always strength in numbers. But if all the complaints about forestry are done on Facebook, Twitter, and Twitter boards, you're not gonna fix it. It's great that you're complaining, they're adequate too. I don't like their practices. I, I kind of don't see it. But you're not gonna fix it without putting a large number of people in criticism. And I'm talking large, I'm talking 50 people. Protesting 10 different things, I'm talking about 4,500 people protesting the forestry plan and the Prime Lands and Forests Act. You wanna make a difference? That's how you're gonna make a difference here, I know that. Trying to give you some advice on that part of it. Now, I'll start with, with Mary machine lumber. I'm gonna go there. I lived in Blackfield, lived there all my life. In 2010, I was very supportive of Mary machine lumber. 2011, 2012, sometime and after that, there were some issues between me and the company. No offense, I'm gonna tell the truth here today. They've not called me since, it's been 14 months since they called. Now, if they don't need my help, that's okay. But I offered to help them, and I'll tell you why. I wrote an email to David Alford in the late fall or early winter, so that's 2010 or 11. I sent the rudest, nastiest, dirtiest, meanest email I've ever written in my entire life, and I've written it on the government. You can go and get it, probably, for all I know. And I said, "Give them 50,000 cubic meters," because the agreement was they would open Blackfield mill. Who wouldn't want it open? I would. I was the councillor for 2008 to 10. The mill shut down in 2007. It's nearly nine years later, you know? We did give the wood, the mill didn't open. I'm not here to criticize the why. I don't know all the reasons why, but I know we increased their allocation and in 11-month period, they ran for it 15 days, and they can verify it themselves. But I can tell you, when Robert Travis and Serge Ravishai and I, I thought and believed we were the most unpopular people on the face of the earth for a four-year period. But when a forestry company doesn't pay their royalty, some of their royalties, no matter what the reasons, it's the equivalent of not paying your taxes. So if you get behind on a business, a runic loan or a bank loan, you can, you can pay the interest, you can, you can make a deal, I'll, I'll pay less than half for a while, I'll, I'll get private investors, whatever. You can, you can, you can always barter on those ones. But royalties, royalties are like taxes. It's, it's, it's almost the same, although I'm not a you know, banker to explain it to you the right way. So every day that we were in government, we could have bankrupted Mary machine lumber. I know there are people that don't like hearing that, but I didn't come here to lie to you. I had way better things to do. Insurance money. We never did anything but try to help them. And when the, when the lawsuits happened, exactly, it all went south and you know, I gotta take some of the blame for that, sure, but when there's lawsuits pending against the province, it's not gonna help a company, unfortunately. In my experience, I haven't seen that help anything. And I've seen it way more than just Mary machine lumber. But when, when the liberal party this past summer took the Blackfield Mill office as their campaign headquarters, it was meant to be symbolic. And I'm gonna tell you, they used, they used both of you and all of your employees by creating a symbolic, a symbolism, that if they were elected, they would open the mill. Well, they prevented you from fixing your, your, your electrical issues stemming from a fire. They took your allocation and then kicked you out of the woods. So there is a inherent and vast, a completely vast difference with what our government did and what theirs did. And I'm gonna be even more blunt. We were chased out of town. We were chased out of town by a chamber, sometimes by a city council. We were chased out of town. And we didn't take their insurance money. We didn't take their allocation. We gave them more once and they didn't get caught, and I think we took it back, but we tried at that moment. But there's a big difference, and I made a help. And I've been on the leader and the radio, and I, I've tried to help you guys in the last couple of months, and I'll continue that. But I've got a phone number. And it's in the book, and it's on Facebook and Google and everywhere else, it's easy to find, call me. My opinion is that the documents is giving them the insurance money back. Our belief was, the company is money, they got a chance to pay it, so here we go. And I'm not against giving Mary machine lumber more allocation, unmo. I've got the emails to prove it. I'll, I'll put them on the worldwide app, if I have to. I couldn't be bothered, flying two people here today, I wouldn't do that. There's more. This government promised that they would open the Mary machine lumber mill, the Blackfield mill, and they did not tell a truth. And it's hurt. It's hurt the people that wanted it. It's hurt the people that couldn't wait to vote that way, they had nothing about it, nothing. Now I wanna talk about the plywood mill, let's talk about it. I'll tell you right here, point-blank, our government provided the former Akron allocation and one point, I believe $1 million for the 100 jobs that would be created if it started. Now, lately, Tilly, thank you, $2 million to the plywood mill is huge. We really appreciate that here at Mary machine. But I can tell you something, and you need to watch it right for it. You're here for jobs today, this is about jobs. They're not offering any more than we did. And the only thing they're offering, the liberals I'm talking about, is we approve the business plan. But what does that mean? What's it mean? How do, how do MLAs approve business plans? That's the same as MLA Fraser saying that he ordered an MRI machine. It's hilarious. MLAs don't order ultrasound equipment. We don't. It's no different. So keep them on the lookout for that, because you've got the federal government on the hook for $2 million. And I don't think that the province is there. Now, if they prove you wrong, I'll be the first person clapping, but pay attention to that one. Now onto the P3s. Lately, your minister here informed people on a live YouTube video, I watched it with a lot of amusement, to tell you the truth. He said that the only reason they're building a P3 is because of the former government. Well, let's talk about that. He used Boyce Town as an example. Well, I just went to a barbecue with the Mary machine valley business association, Lauren Aysis is the president of that, and I believe Wayne Fowler's on the board of directors, and he was there too. The Boyce Town nursing home is run by the same administration that ran the old one before he sent years. And the company who won the tender was Simpson, which I picked here from Quebec. They're the runic company. Simpson contract, you know, they're not from Quebec, or whatever he's talking about on the video. And I think that at the P3 group, you need to hold them accountable with that. They made the decision to go P3. Let's make no mistake, there, there are people that I work with, and people that he works with, and people everywhere that think that's great. And you know what? I couldn't, like, I don't have the, the knowledge of it, that the employees have, but I can tell you it's their decision, it's not mine. I can't make their decisions follow them. I can't even get a culvert fixed, you know what I'm saying? Like, this is completely the liberal government's decision, and hold them to it. And they're not being truthful right now, and I'm gonna point that out, and they're on video, and it's not the truth. It's them that's doing that. Hold them to it. I'm gonna move on to heather recycling. I was saying with the P3, I just, I wanted the, the employees to know that I've, I've been on the radio, you know, going after them on this, I think since March radio. On Sunday, and to look back, I was probably the first person ever on there. By the time I lived on the air, I was asking questions. I'll continue to do that. So keep the fight up, I'll help you, call me, I'll, whatever, I'll try to do it if I can do it, but you're fine. With the heather recycling thing, it's pretty much the same. I've been there, talking to Fred and Kevin and Carl and some of those boys since along, quite a while now, I don't know how many months it's been, I've probably been on the radio for five times. I even tried to, I even talked to Dave too, I think I seen one of his people there, I don't see him, but I even told him to block them on the greenhouse gas emissions. So it's been, we're trying. Trying to help you, I think that what the government could do there is just put out a new tender. That's the easiest thing to do, right? Just put a new tender out, give the company the ability to put in the, I guess not a tender, but the pressure. I support that as well. Looking at daycare cuts and education cuts too are tough, I mean, with the province having a large number of schools that are, that are on the brink of being closed, it's interesting that they would lay off teachers before doing that, because knowing that some schools will close, at that point, there probably will be job losses. But they put the, the job cuts ahead of the, the school closures, which I find is gonna only result in twice as many cuts for education. I just wanted to mention on the daycare cuts, I mean, the current government you have right now, there are nothing amongst the small municipal announcements, like the $1 million here and the $2 million here, and the, the, oh, Andrew Steeves, let's put them back on, it's gonna cost $2 million. Let's take $1.8 million this year from senior citizens, let's, let's cut $2 million into daycare, I mean, quite frankly, it's ridiculous. When you have an $8 billion budget and you're getting 40% of that from Ottawa, you're gonna have to make hard decisions, but don't cut $1 million into them, and like, give them some waste of the year, there's gotta be, there's tons of it. Anyway, I really appreciate the opportunity, I'm sorry, I took, sorry I took too long. I hope I haven't forgotten anybody, I had a lot of things I wanted to say today, and I don't like to write speeches, I like to look people in the eye. Thank you for being here, everyone. Thank you. I'm here at Mary machine lumber.
Thank you, Jake. You did a great job. Our next guest speaker right now is in the Ukraine. We're skyping him in. He's an expert. Oh, you wanna go somewhere else?
Yeah, it's Randall.
Oh, you wanna go, Randall? Randall, come up here. Randall is a deputy leader for the People's Alliance. And I'm right out here. I also have a colleague from Chris Austin's company, the commission that I'm in here. So Randall, have you seen him?
Please, Aaron. And thank you, Mayor Rashid, for inviting the People's Alliance out today. It's, uh, it's a privilege to be here, and we're very happy to come and speak to you guys. Um, Aaron has done a lot of beating up, and so there's not a lot I can add to that, so I'm gonna get to what us as a party see as some of the real issues that are going on. Uh, first of all, I wanna set regrets on behalf of Chris Austin, our leader, he really wanted to be here today. Uh, he's in, he's engaged in three weddings today, so he was unable to make it, just unfortunate. So, um, so I hope I, I do him justice in representing what we have to say and what we see is going on as a party in this area. First of all, the, uh, Aaron Allison said something earlier that absolutely echoes to the bone with our party, and what we think should echo to the bone with every single New Brunswicker. And that is, is that there's no MLA accountability. They don't represent you guys anymore. They don't come to you and ask... They don't come to you and they don't consult with you on budgets. They don't come and ask, "Okay, what's the best way to set up a, a senior care home?" They, uh, they come and they say, "Oh, you need to have all these special interest groups and all the stakeholders." Um, there's lots of groups, there's seniors groups. I wanna know who, who was it that they consulted with, because when we go up into the community, we talk to people, no one knows who these groups are, and they won't tell us who these groups are, that they're getting advice from to make these policies. And all their policies, to be honest, are junk. They're absolute junk. And a lot of it comes down to, it's not necessarily the people, but it's the policies. The policies don't make any sense. They don't, like, why is it... How is it reasonable that they can keep their jobs, their seniority, all their security, but we have people being left out in the cold? And their policies, I mean, one of the biggest things that needs to be repealed is the Forestry Act. That thing's a death sentence. It's hurting woodowners, it's hurting mills, and it, it makes no sense at all. When you look at it, there's very few, and you might guess as to who it does benefit, but it's not people. It's not the regular people in the country, it's not you and I, it's not the vast majority of us, it's forested like a few. And that, that ability's to repeal. And we need to get people back in the woods, we need mills open, we need jobs created once again. It makes no sense to ship lumber anywhere other than where it's being cut, unless there's money for it. Money for the people, and not just for the big companies and special interest groups. Because it makes no sense at all. Hiber's is suffering from, uh, what we call just another, another bad policy and a lack of accountability. They could have owned all these tenders, and they have all these, uh, tenders and policies rewarding contracts. Uh, Craig's was a victim of it, the snow plugs, uh, Hiber's is another one. You have all these contracts that are either being awarded to, uh, outside, outside provincial companies, uh, and it doesn't make any sense. We're hurting for jobs here in New Brunswick. Mayor Rashid, you guys are like the tipping point. There's a lot of communities that you guys wear the face of today. Uh, Sussex, St. Stephen, McHannon, there's small communities all around, all around New Brunswick that are suffering the same fate that you guys have. They're being squeezed out, jobs are being taken away, and there's no rhyme or reason for it. And we don't think, at People's Alliance, we don't think that there's any need for it, at all. So I guess, I'm not gonna take a whole lot more of your time, because like I said, Aaron did all the bashing for us, and I appreciate that. It takes a load off my plate. What I do wanna encourage you guys is to keep fighting. And it is something that today, it's not the end of the journey, it's a stop along the way. You guys will have to do this again, and again, and most likely again. It may not be comfortable, it may not be fun, it may not be pleasant, it may not be the way that you wanted to spend a Saturday afternoon. But Jake was right when he said you guys need to make yourselves heard and continue this effort and help it grow, and not just here, but everywhere. If you guys know people in, in the other communities that are suffering, invite them out, and then at the same time, support them as well. The People's Alliance, it's all the same, but nothing's gonna change until we change the structure of how we put our elected officials in. And it's something that if you look at our policies and our platforms that we've developed, we believe that we have a narrative for it. We have, we have a system in place for MLA recall. So if you have an incident where your MLA is not representing you, not standing up for you, your rights, your jobs, and your businesses in your community, they can be recalled. And it's something that People's Alliance, I mean, we're just like you. We're just a bunch of people that came together that were sick of the way things being done. We're sick of the policies that they're rolling out, and they're just championing over a lot of New Brunswickers. And it needs to come to a stop. And I do wanna thank you guys very much for inviting us out today. And it's something that you'll be seeing a lot of us, and I expect to be seeing a lot of you guys in the future. And keep up the good fight. It's gonna be a little rougher, but there's light at the end of the tunnel.